It was burn and churn, isn't it? Push them as hard as you can, they get fed up, let them go. Just replace them with some younger ones.
So we didn't know Carl Washington.
So did I. I was in the building right next door to it, the AME Building, in the corner of the tall building. So it's, I think, look, you know, there was 2,200 people, 2,500 people.
Yeah, with 5,000.
Overall, it was good, because I got old, my hit list tolerant.
That's a hit list tolerant.
Oh, you really did. When you're younger, it's all too exciting.
Right.
We're going to change the world. But after you've gone through four or five cycles of management, churn, retirement, job. Actually, when I retired from Fort Smith, I contracted for actually three years. But it was part-time.
You have a different viewpoint.
Oh, absolutely.
It's like, what are you going to do, fire me?
In fact, one of the benefits of being an engineer is that knowledge is fairly specific to the products if you've been there for quite a while. You have corporate knowledge. So usually, when an older guy retires, who's an engineer, they try to get him to contract back for a while.
So he can teach other people.
And so I agreed to go back part-time. I got to name my hours, I got to name the days, I got to name which meetings I was going to go to.
The way it should be.
I ended up getting my hourly wage that I got when I was selling, no benefits. And I wasn't one of those people, I didn't care.
Oh.
It was awful. That was great. But even after three years of that, it's like, I got to get up at nine o'clock to be there at 10:00? I don't think so. Even after a while.
Once you get into that mindset, because I've got one active client left, I'm just going to wrap up my term.
You're waiting for it.
It's pushing me towards that end point.
I had no, when I gave it up, retirement was a breeze, I had no problem. I think part of it was because I transitioned to part-time, so that gave me, you know, still got out of the house for a while in early days. When I finally turned off my soldering iron for the last time, I literally sat there and turning off the equipment. This is the last time I'll ever touch one of these things. You know, it's like, eh, it's okay, 45 years is a long time.
You take a lot of stuff in charge.
Lots. And I got out and finally finished. Moved everything away, so I gave away all my books, my notes, a lot of my tools. I just didn't want to do it anymore. It was a great career, but time to move.
Oh, yeah, time to change, it's time to change. It's hard to be creative when you're done.
Oh, you're not creative, you got to push yourself. And then you know it's time to go, because there's other people wanting your job, and you know it's, you know, it's like, it's not fair to them.
I remember in 2010 or whenever, I think it was Harris, they were jumping into hot zones in Afghanistan.
Oh, yeah.
And building closed, small networks.
Oh, yeah. I worked on radios where I could tell, the kind of deal, I could tell you some of the stuff that was out, and they'd have to shoot you, sort of thing. I mean, there was, there was literally a mark in that radio. Where a human captured, you had one bullet left.
That's where you shot it?
You shot it right there, and that took the guts out of the radio.
That's a story there. That's smart. It's like an Apache.
Helicopter?
Don't they have a charge right in the Apache?
I'm not sure, they may. I don't know aeronautics, I was always a ground communications guy. But it was slick stuff. And I'll tell you one thing, the manufacturing was even more advanced. I've been doing this a long time, you know, I'm around. The way they could do things, it was complex and as small as a radio. As an electrician engineer, it's just, I was more impressed with mechanical design and manufacturing than I was with the electronics. I was just saying, it worked.
This evening, we have three scheduled items on the agenda. And what administration matters? We do not have a full board this evening, there are four board numbers, we are one board number short. Each applicant has the right to be heard in front of a full board. So could the applicants raise their hand, please?
Couldn't wake up the song, can't hear you.
I'm speaking very loud, sir, and I'm not going to scream, okay? No, let's not get started. Who's the applicant? Do you wish to proceed without a full board? This is the last meeting of the year, I believe?
Yes.
You are required to have three yes codes.
I mean, applicant also, yeah, I would value it, but yeah.
Okay.
Let's just make sure that we have for the record, Pam, again, your name is, you're on behalf of which application?
Elaine Hosmer.
Just Hosmer, okay, great. Thank you.
And then the Salt Road?
Right here.
Would you like to proceed?
Yes.
And then the wastewater treatment plant?
Will proceed.
Okay. Once again, you are required to get three yes votes in order for your current compound.
All right, so it's Ms. Foster, and you have the Salt Road, and Mr. White, I'd be able to the wastewater treatment plant. Yes?
Correct. Okay, call a roll.
Mr. Newtown?
Here.
Mr. Barone?
Here.
Mr. Stafford?
Here.
Mr. Hausner?
Here.
Mr. DeMarco?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Can I have a big rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you're not able to complete a publication for your position this evening's matters on the Webster Herald, I would ask the applicant for 16, uh, I'm sorry, 613 Webster Road, you're on the agenda as the number two item this evening. If we could move that to the number three item. You have any issue? Okay, thank you. All right, if we could move to the first item, the 594 to 596 Ridge Road. We'll read that in the record.
594 to 596 Ridge Road Deck. Located at 594 to 596 Ridge Road, applicant Elaine Hosmer is requesting an area variance to allow a zero-foot side setback where 10 feet is required, associated with construction of 15 by seven and a half foot deck on a .20 acre parcel having SBL number 078.20-1-9, located in an LC-1 low intensity neighborhood commercial district under section 350-16 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Hi, hi, I'm Elaine Hosmer, the owner of the property of 594, 596 Ridge Road. And I was hoping to have that deck installed to improve the property and to make it easier for that tenant to enter and exit the apartment and for property enjoyment and property improvement. It's pretty straightforward, it's explained, 15 feet long by seven and a half feet deep. Is there any other information that I can give?
Assuming it's just a corner of the deck that's going to be up to zero foot setback, correct?
Um, right, yeah, right, exactly, just the corner, exactly, yes.
Because the asphalt driveway part area, whatever you want to call it, filmed by tenant to the west, basically comes at an angle, right about a 45, almost, degree angle?
Correct. The deck would end, and there would be a few feet before you get to the neighbor's property. I know it is a very upward property line. He has installed a three-foot-high concrete barrier between his parking and my property.
It's a tight slope. I think the building's a little foot off the ground, but we don't imagine it looks that way.
I believe you had indicated in your application that you were going to have this off the ground about 24, 27 inches?
Uh, correct, um, yes.
Oh, 32 inches, I think.
Well, right, at the other end, further away from the house, it would be, the elevation at that door right there is 27 inches.
So it's pretty low to the ground?
Correct, yeah, it is. And there's not that much of a, you know, property slants a little bit for water, but it's not that big of a, it's not like a giant hill or anything, it's very gradual.
And a patio wouldn't be allowed here? I don't think there are common specifications. Anybody else?
That is very modest in size, it's not accessible. It makes the entrance and exit from that particular apartment safer. Right now, it's kind of dangerous, and as I said, it's a really tight site, there's nowhere else to go with it.
Why couldn't you run the deck to the north rather than to the west?
Well, there is the issue, the pole that you see there is the, where the center of the septic tank upper is. And I did want to go more to the west with the hope that maybe a door could be put there for apartment one, so that that tenant would enter and exit from the back with the hopes that people would use the parking in the back, and that I could add the parking in the front, which would have the property look where it's already built. There is room in that, that is the kitchen, the two windows are. And that was a hope of mine to be able, but I can't go too far north. Well, just because I guess I might need to include that door for apartment one, with the hope that they could enter and exit.
So in order to accommodate a second egress, that's the orientation I would need?
That is what I'm hoping, yes. And plus, yeah, I can't go too far north because of the septic there. Because the septic tank is there, maybe to be located in there, obviously, with the metal, as that you see.
So the rationale with this orientation is to accommodate a second egress out of that apartment, apartment number two?
Apartment number one.
Apartment number one.
Correct.
And because you've got a septic tank access issue.
Correct.
Like, no more separation to the apartment. I mean, we're just calling a path, right?
The other thing?
It's very tight, sir.
If I could just add that, you know, the, there is the pipe coming out from the basement that goes to the septic, so this way you can go and test that as far as digging down. That was another issue. It's kind of like a bottle shaped, you know, and it goes out. So I just, obviously, digging down the number of feet that we were going to have to dig down, I had to be careful going, if it's really short, I mean, I kind of went a little over, but I'm hoping not to make it too short so that it doesn't, when they do, they're digging, that they don't hit the pipe to your old septic tank.
The setback on that side is, I can't leave this drawing, it's like, what do you ask one? Does that say .09 feet? That looks like maybe .04, I don't know. Could you at least come back to 13 feet, two-foot setback at that corner?
Um, yes, I believe 13 feet.
Okay. I think we're, once again, as Mr. Hausner pointed out, we're just trying to get a little bit of separation. It's pretty tight there already, so if we could come back a little bit, gives you a little bit of better access in case you're doing walk-through. This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Seeing no one, return the discussion back to the board. So it's NYCR, section 617, in the environmental court, I'll make a motion for type two secret. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other comments? I'll hit on a couple of the finesse facts. I don't see any detriment to nearby properties, this is pretty much a commercial district on the corner there, right? You know, the current setbacks are pretty minimal, are pretty minimal as it is. Without being able to fully read this, it's less than a foot on the west side, on the 1746, 22, in this one side. On the east side, front setback off Red Road is, as well, most structures in a very deep, sits on a very deep block, I guess I'll look at that. I don't see any adverse environmental impacts. The applicant has indicated that they'll reduce the size from 15 foot to 13 foot, going from east to west, that's a reduction from 15 to 13, two feet, to give a little bit of buffer space on that west block line. Salt, obviously, but in this case, I think, as was mentioned by the applicant, they would like to be able to accommodate a second egress, which in the safety of this document is ours. Okay. Any other comments to add? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to approve a variance for 594 to 596 Ridge Road Deck, located at 594, 596 Ridge Road. Applicant Elaine Hosmer requesting an area variance to allow a zero-foot side setback where 10 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 13-foot, 27 and a half foot deck on a .20 acre parcel having SBL number 078.20-1-9, located in LC-1 low intensity neighborhood commercial district under section 350-16 of the code of the town of Webster.
Just a point of correction, there would have to be a two-foot side setback.
Correct the record to say to allow a two-foot side setback for the 13 and a half by seven and a half foot deck.
Second.
Call a roll.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Hausner?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, couple of conditions apply, must obtain unnecessary government permits, including the town buildings from there, and one year, meaningful construction is expected to expire one year from this evening. Okay, you've got your variance, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we're going to skip current agenda matter number two, which is 613, and we're going to go to agenda item number three, 371 Salt Road Shed Overhang.
371 Salt Road Shed Overhang, located at 371 Salt Road. Applicant Rebecca and Randy Foster are requesting an area variance to allow a 70-foot rear setback where 50 feet is required, and a 13-foot side setback where 15 feet is required, associated with a new terminal attached utility shed on a .54 acre parcel having SBL number 050.04-1-54, located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 350-12 of the code of the town of Webster.
Mr. Newton, there is a significant amount of people on this side that can't hear. I think your speaker might be turned down lower than on that side. Just a quick show of hands, who is not able to hear the conversation? It's everybody on this side of the room. Does that speaker have an adjustment?
Yes, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Not somebody was back there.
All right, could you please state your name and address and describe your project?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Foster. This is Randy Foster, I live at, we live at 371 Salt Road. Our project is shed overhang, a roof extension off the rear of our shed. It announced to us because of the roof, a overhang, it became an accessory structure and now is attached to our shed. And we weren't aware of it, well, we were aware of the setbacks, but not that it was going to be considered an accessory structure. So we're asking for the area variance to allow for the shed overhang to remain attached to our shed.
So really, we're dealing with an accessory structure at this point in time, which provides the applicant the opportunity to, we're going to end up, if this is approved, considering this as an accessory structure, which would allow them to have the utility shed in addition. Correct? So this is no longer a shed. It's a conversion of the shed to an accessory. I will note in your application, I think it was 12. All right, six, and then there were like one more that came in, you know, later in the day. Six or seven of the neighbors vote in favor of this remaining as is. Looks like 355 Salt Road, 379 Salt Road, 382 Salt Road, 378 Salt Road, 374 Salt Road, 350 Brooks Road. And I don't recall. Those are the ones that I have, were all in favor of this application. In order to eliminate this concern, the option would be to remove the existing overhang. But once again, none of the neighboring properties have any comments on it.
Mr. Newton, if I can make in addition to that, none of this shed nor extension are permanent structures. There is nothing affixed to the ground. It is sitting on, the lean-to part is sitting on elephant feet, if you will.
Yep.
And the shed itself is on cinder blocks, just to get the platform below.
I understand.
Josh, I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that this came to us because of the shed behind us that was partially part of this, became aware of, of the town became aware of. Previously, the shed, I believe, had permanent, yes, the lean-to, they're not. Thoughts, comments?
The original shed, man, I don't know if it was personally there, the size, I don't know. It's just a lean-to.
And I'll just note that the property directly to the south at 375 Salt Road has what is deemed to be an actual true accessory structure that is closer to the property by multiple, close to here. So it certainly would be out of character if this part of Salt Road.
Actually, you can see that garage on that. That garage is more of a puzzle stash.
Right.
Substantial, it's a lean-to, you can see through it.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Seeing no one, return the discussion back to the board. So it's NYCR, section 617, in the environmental court, I'll make a motion for type two secret. Sir, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other comments, questions?
Certainly not out of character. You know, as Josh pointed out, there's a large accessory structure garage right next door to the south. There's another tall shed to the rear. Frankly, this particular shed with lean-to to the rear is less intrusive than the other structures. I, you know, as you said, you have six letters from the joint property owners saying I'm in favor of leaning that as it is. I wasn't sure what this really affects. So it's really not on the character of the neighborhood. You know, that's not a great nearby problem just. Folks just want to store their furniture under the roof, so it's really not achievable by anyone. It's not really substantial. Actually, on setbacks, the setbacks actually meet the code, because the shed code was revised by a mistake. It calls itself created, but I sincerely believe that the folks did realize that it was required for that. Kind of undesirable change, again, you have people in front of it. And compared to the other structures, unsupervised properties, the request is massive. It's, it's very valid.
Aye. Anybody else? Nothing else. I'll make a motion to grant an area variance for allowing shed overhang, in this case, conversion, we would consider from a shed to an accessory structure. Located at 371 Salt Road, the applicant Rebecca and Randy Foster, who are requesting a seven-foot rear setback or 15-foot would be required. In this instance, for a accessory structure. So where 15 feet is required, and 13 feet side setback where 15 feet is required, associated with lean-to, to attach, to, and attach, attached to a utility shed on a .54 acre parcel having SBL number 050, 04-1, that's 15 feet, or located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 350-12 of the code of the town of Webster.
Settle down.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Hausner? Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
They were, they were trying to create a vision, if they were to create a true accessory structure, they didn't, if there was any opposition to that.
That says not an accessory structure.
And I was in the room, but looking at it, I'm not saying that, but yeah, there's some lean-to, it's open. Maybe Mr. Newton may be okay with the, 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 the accessory structure. Then this is considered, the, the second.
I'm considering this is now an accessory structure.
Okay.
Right. It's the definition of an accessory structure, doesn't it? That's the definition of shed.
And you can hear corrections.
That's why I said this is now an accessory structure, not a shed. That was my opinion.
I agree. But if they wanted to remove what's present in there, put in a full-size enclosure, would you have any opposition to that?
Well, that's the reason we point out that a lot right next door has a large structure, it is a lot, and so we have, that is all. I think that, that's the, that's the, that's the reason.
Very good. Thank you. Double conditions apply, must pay non-necessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one year minimum construction is set to expire one year from the season. Okay, but it's already built, so.
Thank you.
Just note, you know, to repeat this one more time, this is now an accessory structure. Sir?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, let's read the last applicant into the record, sixteen, six thirteen Webster Road.
Six thirteen Webster Road wastewater treatment plant improvements. Located at six thirteen Webster Road, applicant Mayor Daryl Hurst is requesting an extension of non-conforming use associated with both upgrades to the Village of Webster wastewater treatment plant on a ten point one zero acre parcel having SPL number zero six five point one zero dash one dash one three, that slash web, located in an R3 single-family residential district, under section three fifty dash nineteen of the code of the town of Webster.
What do you think?
My name is Don White, I'm the attorney for the Village of Webster. With me tonight is Matt Higgins, who's an engineer with LaBella, engineers for the Village of Webster. As most of you are aware, the village is in the midst of the planning process for upgrades to its wastewater treatment plant at six thirteen Webster Road. The village has had its wastewater treatment plant at their location since nineteen thirty-four, and it has undergone several upgrades since that time. The primary upgrades that the village is proposing at this time is the construction of two new three thousand three hundred twenty square foot trickling filters and a forty-two hundred square foot septic receiving station. There already is a trickling filter there, so ultimately there'll be two trickling filters, not three, the old one will get ultimately torn down, the two new ones are built. Other than that, and Matt will go into this more detail, the bulk of the project consists of replacing much of the equipment, pumps and things like that, HVAC, to make the plant much more energy efficient and compliant with current codes. The village is not seeking, nor is it required to have any area variances. This is not an application for an area variance. So despite the fact that the village filled out the town's statement of difficulty for area variance, that, that really doesn't apply. This is, because it is a non-conforming use, the use as a, as a wastewater treatment plant is grandfathered into the town zoning, what is required is the extension of a non-conforming approval for an extension of a non-conforming use under section three fifty ninety-one of the Webster zoning code. And it's a very short statute. I'll read it to you. "The non-conforming use shall not be extended or increased except with the approval of the zoning board of appeals and upon such reasonable restrictions as it may prescribe depending upon the nature and history of the use and the effect of such extensions on neighboring properties, including but unlimited to traffic, noise, property devaluation, drainage, sewage, odors, and other such deleterious effects of such extension." Now, I'll have, when I turn it over to Matt, he'll go through the effects, if any, on neighboring properties of the proposal. Two things. First, I'd like to point out, seeker's already been taken care of. The village had itself been lead agency, had the town was on notice, the town didn't have any issue with that, and the village took a negative declaration two weeks ago or so.
Yeah, we have problems.
Very good. The neighbors have some questions and concerns about the septic receiving station. And I'm sure you're gonna hear from many of them this evening. Before you do that, I'd like to point out that in nineteen, or twenty sixteen, the neighbors, principally Michael and Polly Khan, who are sitting here, sued the Village of Webster over odors at its wastewater treatment plant, principally odors caused by composting leaves with septic sludge. That lawsuit was settled in late March of twenty eighteen, and there is a written settlement agreement. That settlement agreement expressly contemplates and provides that after the village, well, it was a two-step process, let me, I'll step back for a second. The village agreed and the plaintiffs agreed that the village would first investigate the construction of an off-site septic receiving station somewhere other than six thirteen Webster Road. And if it was economically feasible, it would not, not have septic receiving at its wastewater treatment plant. And it was determined that if, if it could do it, then the cost was not greater than a hundred thousand dollars than to build it at the six thirteen Webster Road, that it would do it off-site. Well, the village engaged LaBella to try to find and, and get estimates as to the cost of an off-site septic receiving station, and the cost was way more than a hundred thousand dollars. And all of that documentation was provided to the attorneys for the cons and the other neighbors. So the agreement then goes on to provide that if it is determined that the estimated cost to install a septic receiving station and associated building and equipment at an alternative location within the Village of Webster is greater than a hundred thousand dollars, or the engineers estimate to construct a septic receiving station and associated building and equipment at the wastewater treatment plant, then defendant will only begin accepting septic, RV waste, or any other similar material at the wastewater treatment plant after defendant completes the construction of a septic receiving station inside a new building with HVAC control dedicated for this purpose only, and such system becomes operational. The building will also be constructed with a garage bay and door as sufficient size to allow entry of a typical septic hauling truck or RV inside and the closing of the door before discharge is commenced. The defendant shall also install a subgrade flow equalization tank downstream of the septic receiving station and a pumping system, if necessary, to control the rate of discharge, the content of this equalization tank into the wastewater treatment plant influit sewer. So as Matt will further explain and show the board, what is contemplated in the village's project is a septic receiving station that meets all the criteria that both the cons and the rest of the neighbors agreed to back in twenty eighteen. And I would also note that the village did agree and has no intent to accept any leach aid at the wastewater, at its wastewater treatment plant. That won't happen. Also in the agreement, the village agreed that it would limit the total number of septic haulers to seven. So if you hear that the whole reason the village wants to receive septic is to make money, that's simply not for the village. It's, it's really, you know, people that have septic tanks, they get them pumped, it's gotta go somewhere. So they're just offering, offering this to up to seven septic haulers. So I would just say, with all due respect to the neighbors, they can't have it both ways. They can't accept the money and settlement from the village and now complain that the village is gonna put up a septic receiving station that they already agreed to.
Can you, I'll just, I'll start.
Okay. And so at this point, I will turn it over to Matt, who will address the effects, if any, on the neighboring properties of the proposed upgrades that the village countered. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Higgins. I'm a civil engineer at LaBella Associates here in Rochester. The Village of Webster hired LaBella to be the design engineer for all phases of this wastewater treatment plant improvements project, and I am LaBella's project manager for the project. So as Don noted, the village has owned and operated a wastewater treatment facility at this site at sixteen, six thirteen Webster Road since nineteen thirty-four. The village has undertaken efforts to continually improve it over time to form the facility that's currently there in operation. The village is now proposing an improvements project that represents an extension of an existing non-conforming use, as Don detailed. I would like to briefly highlight the following items and then be available for questions from the board. I'll go through the general scope of the project and, as Don noted, the anticipated impact on traffic, noise, property devaluation, drainage, sewage, and odors. First, what you see here on the easel is the existing condition of the treatment plant. It's, north is up in the figure. Webster Road is along the right side of the figure.
Excuse me? Do you think you could move that up so we can see it on board? Thank you.
Thanks. So you see there is existing conditions as it is at six thirteen Webster Road. As Don noted, one of the major items of work is replacing the existing trickling filter, of which there's one large trickling filter currently located right here. It's a hundred and fifty foot diameter with a large dome, which is why it's white in the aerial image. Replace that one existing trickling filter with two new, much smaller trickling filters. Because the village, as part of this project, will be disconnecting its treatment system from that of the town, this item of work is required by the Department of Environmental Conservation to provide the necessary redundancy at the village's facility. So the one large, again, the one large trickling filter tank you see in the aerial here will be replaced by two much smaller trickling filters. The second major item of work proposed as part of the project is to construct a fully enclosed septic receiving station with a buried tank to receive septic, which is proposed to be in full compliance with the legal settlement that Don documented. There are smaller items of work, including equipment replacements, pumps, valves, pipes within existing buildings, digester structural rehabilitation to make the digester operation improved, and electrical and mechanical plumbing improvements to the site. I'll just show you two quick images here. I'm gonna move away from the mic and show you. This is the proposed site plan. So where you saw one large trickling filter here, you now see two much smaller ones. You can see the dotted outline of the existing trickling filter here for reference. So you can see that the two proposed new ones are much smaller. And down here, where there's currently grass adjacent to the digesters, is proposed to be constructed, that, that structure there that you see in this image, right down here. So that is the, you know, a rendering of the proposed septic receiving station, and I'll, I'll just detail now the compliance with the settlement that Don noted. The, hopefully you can hear me. All right. The intent here is that a septic hauler pull in and pull into this door. This door is an overhead, a mechanical overhead door. So they pull in, that door closes, as well as the door on the far side, before anything else happens. So part of the settlement was ensuring that that, that an enclosed bay be provided for which a septic hauler can enter and close both doors to completely enclose the vehicle before any septic discharge occurs. So that is provided for as part of this building here. The other thing I'll note is that in the site plan, there's a, let's see if I can do this. There's a site, there's a rectangular structure here that is the buried equalization tank. You'll note that you can't, you don't see a tank right here, and that's because, all you, all you see are hatches because it's required to be below grade due to the text of the settlement. So having pointed out those items, I'd like to specifically note anticipated impacts to traffic, noise, property devaluation, drainage, sewage, and odors, as noted per the town code. First, traffic. Along Webster Road, New York State Route two fifty, where the wastewater treatment plant is located, the average annual daily traffic volume counted by New York State DOT estimates an average of five thousand eight hundred and ten vehicles per day along that road that includes two hundred and thirty-five trucks. The village estimates that the proposed improvements will add seven trucks per day due to the septic delivery. So it's a very small anticipated impact on traffic. As far as noise, the proposed improvements are not anticipated to increase noise level at the site because the nature of day-to-day treatment, the nature of the site will stay as is, and it will, it is currently and will remain simply a wastewater treatment plant. Property devaluation. As I just mentioned, the property currently is and will continue its core functions wastewater treatment plant. The applicant anticipates no impact to nearby property values as the site use, and thus the impact on neighboring properties, will not change. Drainage. The post-project impervious area at the site is anticipated to be approximately equal to the existing impervious area at the site, and that's largely due to removing that one large hundred and fifty foot diameter tank and replacing it with smaller facilities. Furthermore, just to note for the board's, for the board's information, the practice of collecting all stormwater on-site rather than allowing it to flow off-site will continue. So currently, all of the stormwater that collects on the site flows into existing stormwater management facilities at the site, flows into a pump station at the western edge of the site, and then is recirculated back to the influit at the plant. So flow does not go from the site to the creek that borders the property along the west. Sewage, you know, the site is and will continue to be a wastewater treatment plant. The proposed improvements do not increase the flow capacity of the treatment plant. And lastly, odors. The proposed improvements are not anticipated to significantly change odor level. The village anticipates odor level will be equal to or better, i.e. less odor, after completion of these improvements. The septic receiving station, as required by the settlement, again, includes doors that will be closed prior to discharge of septic. prior to discharge of septic and includes odor scrubbing technology to prevent the release of odor. The path of septic after discharge from the truck is fully below grade, which ensures compliance. So it's discharged from the truck, goes through a screen, and then goes below grade into that tank. And then continues below grade to the inlet of the facility. The exposed surface area of the trickling filter media will decrease once the existing trickling filter is replaced. So if there's concern about odor from trickling filter tank surface area, if anything, that would be better because that surface area is, is significantly being reduced. And lastly, the digester repairs, including concrete repair, recoding, replacing the digester flare, should improve digester operation and reduce any associated odor. So in summary, you know, I appreciate the board's time. I won't belabor this, but I do appreciate the time and we're happy to answer any questions.
With respect to the, the septic building, the receiving station, could you help me understand that the service area for the Village of Webster, is the entire village, isn't it? What is this service exactly?
Do you mean?
Who are the customers? What, help me understand the exact customer base.
The customer base is not, for the septic, is not?
No, I, I, I'm asking it with respect to the septic itself.
Right. It's not the village, it's not residents of the Village of Webster?
No, maybe you're missing what I'm asking. Help me understand, number one, what does this plant service within the town, village, and lots of... Just wanna set a baseline. What goes here? Not the septic building, the facility?
Well, it serves the Village of Webster. Five thousand some odd residents.
I'm trying to set a baseline. Can you help me out here? Thank you. Can you answer the question?
Sure. So the village as it is, serves the village residents. And then the septic receiving station would be open within limits to receive septic discharge from any of the seven haulers. You know, a hauling company.
Okay, so let's go back to the first part. There's 5,000 residents within, residencies in the Village of Webster that this plant services, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all through conveyment systems. How many of those 5,000 in the Village of Webster are on septic, not sewer?
I do not know.
Are there any?
If there are any, maybe there's one. One household. Otherwise, everybody is connected to the sewer system.
So help me, so, okay, perfect, you answered that. Help me now understand the purpose of this facility to bring these seven haulers in.
The purpose is?
If there are no, if there are no customers in the Village of Webster, right, that need septic, right? Who's gonna be using this? Where's that coming from? I'm gonna assume somebody like Chamberlain is gonna come in. They may be out in Ontario, they may be out in the town Webster, where there's no sewer service, black thing, and bringing here. So it's not, it's not satisfying any village residents, correct?
I can't qualitatively, you know, I can't firmly say zero village residents, but I think you have the intent. I think your understanding is correct generally of intent.
Okay. And in this treatment system, where is the number one area of odor? The digesters? In today's operation, where is, where is majority of the odor coming from? The digester?
I guess would either be the digester, of which there are two, or one of the open-air clarifier tanks, which contains wastewater undergoing treatment, but there's no roof or anything, so it's just open to the air.
Okay, so nothing, no odor is gonna be coming from the trickling filter system, which you're replacing, per se, correct?
Correct, I don't believe, the trickling filters are covered and I don't believe there's significant.
So the odor today is really coming from the digesters and the clarifier, of which the improvement of the digester, I think you said, included some other, some upgrades, including a new flare?
I'll qualify that by saying I haven't collected any odor measurements at the site, so I'm guessing that... Just wanted to clear that and have made up that.
So back to the septic building and receiving, receiving station more broadly. What is the driver, what's driving the village water construction?
Well, it always, for many, many years, treated septic from various haulers in the area. And it simply wants to continue to offer that service. I would note that the town also accepts septic at its sewage treatment plant, which is also a pretty existing non-conforming use in a residential district. From more, you know, from more locations than simply the town of Webster.
Last question that I have, in terms of the truck traffic, you said there's about 5,800, roughly, vehicles per day, of which 235 are trucks. These trucks are obviously, once again, I'll just reference Chamberlain because that's what I see around town, right? They're gonna be similar to that. Or are they gonna be bringing in large 18-wheeler style tanks?
No, they'd be similar to Chamberlain. Chamberlain would likely be one of the lead companies to use this facility.
And that accesses Walrode access? Now, it will be, it will be too?
Correct.
That's what I didn't hear you say.
No, no one uses the Walrode access. It's all 250.
Is there a gate on Walrode?
But it's never open. It's sort of like emergency. And I would note that when the village agreed, the village used to also accept leachate. And that would come, leachate is, you know, like from landfills. And that would come in large tanks, 18-wheel tanks.
And that's part of this, what I'll call this agreement, was no leachate.
That's, that's never gonna happen.
Correct. Are those trucks unlimited on a daily basis? Do Chamberlain only go there once, or can they go there multiple times?
The design of the upgrades will allow for the acceptance of up to 20,000 gallons of septic per day maximum.
Can you repeat? I couldn't hear.
The, the question was, can a truck go multiple times per day?
And my response is that the current basis of design for the project is to accept, is to allow for the acceptance of up to a maximum of 20,000 gallons per day of septic.
And what's a single truck as Mr. Belling?
I believe it's, they're not full all the time, you know, but I believe they're somewhere 2,000, 3,000 gallon capacity per truck.
So it isn't, that's what I was... Seven, that's seventy, or not? Right. Or are they not, or are they seven different haulers?
That's tight.
I'm understanding this right? The nature change here that might have an effect on the neighbors is the acceptance of this, of septic. And it's, it's going to be a proximity septic. I mean, the other improvements, I don't think are, I'm correcting my mind. The other improvements have nothing to do with odor. What they do, trickle.
Yeah, there's, there's only active odor control for the septic. The rest is, odor improvements might be a tangential benefit to, to general improvements of the facilities. But generally, it's, you know, construction of those two trickling filters is a D E C mandated improvement to go from one tank to two. And rehabilitation of the digester, like I mentioned, with a new flare, we anticipate that'll have some benefits as far as odor reduction. But those are just safety and process-related improvements that are really needed due to the age and the condition of the digesters.
And I would also note that prior to settlement of the lawsuit with the neighbors, when the village accepted septic, simply it was a pipe coming out of the ground next to the driveway. Where the septic hauler would just pull up next to it, plug into it, totally out in the open.
Like an RV park.
Correct, similar, exactly, just like in an RV park. So this, I would, I would, I would suggest that the new facility is, is a vast improvement over the old way, the village accepted septic as far as odors are concerned.
Mr. Artuso, could you give the board a little bit of background on what this process looks like, start to finish? Meaning, planning board engagement, town board engagement? What, what is that benefit, what look like?
Upon receiving the application for the variance plans provided by PRC group, we've repeated a couple of different times. We did not bring this to the planning board yet. We spoke with the planning board about the project and they didn't feel that they would add any value because it's a pretty self-contained site. They really didn't have a desire to review this. So there hasn't been any need for engagement with the town board yet either. There's no special permits needed. All that's really required is this variance from his own board. But again, it's not a variance. It's an extension of a non-conforming use.
Correct. Jeff, were there some comments though, Olivia Z?
Yes, there were comments. And Matt, Mr. Higgins has provided responses to those comments. I can certainly move through some of them if you'd like.
Yeah.
These are polycom.
What's that?
Yeah, we don't have a problem.
Okay, so are there mechanical plans for the EQ tanks complete? Their response was yes. Is there an existing flare? Yes, the existing flare is located on the roof of the digester building. Is there a proposed new flare? If so, where will it be located? How many feet off the ground? The response is flare is required for safety purposes to allow for the release and burning off of gas to prevent overpressurization of the anaerobic digesters. Due to the age of the existing flare, the proposed work includes replacing the existing flare with a new flare in approximately the same location as the existing. This location, which is on the roof of the digester building, is approximately 16 and a half feet above the ground. When will burning of the flare take place? The response was the gas produced in the digester is normally burned in a boiler, which is being replaced due to its age, to produce hot water for the digester operation. The amount of gas produced is variable depending on sludge content. Wastewater treatment plant operators estimate that the existing flare operates daily. We do not anticipate a significant change to flare operation, although we anticipate the efficiency of the anaerobic digesters will improve due to the proposed improvements. Is there a standby generator? If so, how, how often is it anticipated to be exercised? Is there any sound attenuation being proposed? The wastewater treatment plant has an existing standby generator located in the service building that provides power to the wastewater treatment plant in the event of a power outage and will remain as is. The existing standby generator was built in the 1970s and is limited to providing 230 volt power. The proposed work includes installation of a new standby generator, 300 kilowatts, on a concrete pad and housed within a sound attenuating enclosure near the southwest corner of the wastewater treatment plant site to provide additional backup power at the modern 460 volt power supply. We anticipate the new generator will be exercised weekly for one hour and will only run continuously during power failures. Please note also that the proposed standby generator is being installed because there is not adequate space in the existing electrical panels. We anticipate the overall wastewater treatment plant power usage will be approximately the same after the project is completed. The next PRC comment was to add the 100-year floodplain boundary to the map to ensure that the proposed building is not within, in the floodplain. Lobella has added that to the site plan and the town has confirmed that its proposed location is without, is outside of the floodplain. That is, that's it. Don, you indicated in some of the particulars of the settlement with respect to the lawsuit, and obviously, I don't have much detail about that at all, I don't know as though I need it, but that obviously would be, you know, potentially if there was a violation, a dispute between the lines of the settlement or to the village and those individuals that may have the class of plaintiffs that commenced the action. But obviously, the issues that I'm assuming all the folks are here for go above and beyond it, although the issues may be similar. So they go beyond the limited amount of individuals that were plaintiffs in that action. So understand that. And I don't know how many, how many plaintiffs were in the settlement or in the action, so. I know there was less than 5,000 of the residents of the Village of Webster, right?
Rough count from the caption 28 comments. None of them were villagers.
Okay. So I get, the point I'm trying to make is this. Are there, since this improvement has gone forward, are there other issues that have been brought to your attention from your person, Matt, or anybody on your team that go beyond the criteria in the statutes that include but not limited to traffic and waste quarters? Can you, can you tell me what, what the top five concerns have been? Were they all within those criteria that matter?
I have not been privy directly to any concerns of the neighbors, if that's what you're asking. I don't think, you could ask Mike or Palacan, would probably be the ones to ask. I don't know if they approached the village to talk about this or not, but they can answer that question.
I hope Mr. Belling's.
All right, well, wait, I just wanna direct our communication in one another way.
Since, since the settlement of the lawsuit, there have been, I think, one incident that Mrs. Khan had a concern about. I don't even remember what it was, but it really had nothing to do with operation of the wastewater treatment plant.
So since, since the evidence moved forward with the implementation of the improvements, let's say in the last six or nine months, Matt or yourself or anyone on your team or suspect, you haven't been inundated with questions or concerns from folks in close proximity to the, to the.
I have not been. Of course, I've talked to Josh and received a response to PRC comments, but I'm not aware that the village has been flooded with comments and I have not been personally. I don't think my contact information is very available to town residents.
Other than engineering work? Other than engineering work, there has been no, no construction work at the site. We need this board's approval first and then a building permit, but so. Everything, if you drive by there today and everything looks as it's always been.
And Jeff, we've received, outside of the folks that are here this evening, was it one or two comments?
Yeah, we received two comments online.
A couple of phone calls in the past week, a couple of walk-ins. Josh, has the, have any comments?
No, there has not.
We haven't received them yet?
Correct.
So why don't we go forward here for the residents and the people? Well, I had a question. Are we going to continue ban operations when we're going to disbanding the existing treatment tank? Are we going to install one tank and hopefully have the whole tank take care of everything? They need all, all the requirements until the second tank is constructed?
Yes, so it will be phased, exactly, so if I could show you.
Please do.
This tank will be constructed first, adjacent to the existing tank, while the existing tank remains online. Then this new tank, when it's done being built, will be started up and become operational. And then the existing tank here will be demolished. So during that period, this new little tank, the operational handle and all float. And then the second smaller tank to be built, within the footprint of the existing. So it will be phased.
Does the same tank come to the auto handle?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, to that point, is the volume of, of the process going down? Recently on Xerox, there was a fraction of the company used to be in the village and followed their rough, like, is the volume actually lower now that about, say, ten years later?
I, I don't know, I haven't seen data that far back. I would guess yes, just like you're doing, but.
Well, if you want, John Karenavalli, who's a plane operator, is sitting in the room, he could answer that directly, but I don't believe the flow has decreased significantly at all. Xerox still does have some operations that apparently generate a lot of wastewater. Because they're, they're quarterly build from the village is substantial. So the flows have not changed materially in the last time. Okay, any other questions?
All right, we're going to open this up to public and I understand there's several, several of you in the room. Is there a spokesperson for the group? Here's what we, we want to avoid. We want to be succinct in the comments, we want to state thoughts, you know, emotions to play into this, certainly. But, you know, if it's the same comment over and over, if it's older, 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 we understand that, okay? So as we start to get through these, if we get a lot of repetition, please just be cognizant that, we understand. And it's probably representative of other folks in the room.
Do you speak?
Yep. You can state your name and address?
My name is Michael Khan. I live in six ten Webster Road, which is directly across the street. That would be the west end. I live to the east, directly across the street, the village sewage plant. We moved in in nineteen eighty-two. I knew it was a sewage treatment plant. Been there many years, but not any problems. Problem started, I don't know, six or eight years ago. We disperated village board, current management from the plant. And around two thousand seventeen, there were tons and tons of human sewage composting. Many complaints from the neighbors, to DEC. In my opinion, in DEC's comments, they would overload the composting. They would put all the treated sewage on the leaves rather than use a formula. It got so unbearable. They would take septic trucks, day after day, they line them up. Like the attorney said, they would just dump them in a hole.
Excuse me, sir, did you know, what year, it was?
It was around two thousand sixteen, seventeen, two thousand fifteen.
Prior to the settlement?
Yeah, just before the lawsuit. This is what triggered the lawsuit. Lich aid trucks, those are tractor-trailer trucks that haul liquid from the landfills. They would come, one after another, a couple of weeks, couple a day. One day I followed one and I gave up almost in Syracuse. They were bringing, it was coming from Syracuse area. The neighbors complained to the village, to DEC, wrote letters, called, I went on TV. Showed up at the village board meeting with fifty people. We had a petition, almost four hundred signatures out, please stop this behavior. Village did nothing. We got together twenty-eight families or people and went through the long process of hiring Farachi Lane and legally taking the court. We did settle. Did, we wanted to go to trial. Our attorney had an expert on sewage treatment plant. He was ready to regulate from California. He said this plant was a joke. Anyways, what Don White says, not a good street. That's the place that villagers build a building and dump our septic trucks. Everybody said, hey, that's great, let me sign, we're done. We won. Village Sewage Plant was built in the thirties. Grandfather Danny says, well, the grandfathers that built the sewage treatment plant, they were smart enough to put it out in the, out in the cornfields and a couple of miles from the village so the village people didn't have to deal with it. And it went for years and years and everybody was happy. Well now, there's thousands of homes around that, the village sewage treatment plant. And Don, he even admitted, there's no septic haulers or no septic tanks in the village. This is for village revenue. Chamberlain, Barefoot, some of these guys that I talked to said, the village will undercut anybody for price. That's why the village gets so many septic haulers. Some days, ten, fifteen septic haulers were lining up to dump the sewage in this open pit. And the village did nothing. They waited until they rode us through court and then they offered us a deal. These septic trucks that lined up at the village, this is before the settlement. I'm going back to the history of the plant.
Yeah, I just want to clarify once again, there's been no, no trucks since-
No septic haulers that I've seen since the settlement, yes. These septic haulers that come, that came to the village plant, who dumped their concentrated sewage, the trucks are five thousand gallons or so, so that's a, that's a lot of waste. This would go into the village plant that was built in the thirties. In my opinion, look at some pictures, poorly maintained, obsolete, drying beds with broken windows. You see that, you see the loader there? That's the way they break the sewage sludge, what's left over from the drying beds, up to the composting beds and put it in an open loader and drive it up to hell. And the day I took that picture, it was a rainy day and it was stunk so bad. Anyways, once all this stuff goes down to village plant, see, the village does not have a speedie permit. They have very little inspection from DEC. The town of Webster and their plant on Phillips Road, they hold a speedie's permit. That's, that's DEC's permission to discharge into the lake. So anything that go through the village plant on Route two fifty, whether it's treated or not, goes to the town plant. And many times I heard from town plant people that when multiple trucks discharge into the village plant, they can't keep up with it and it heads downstream to the town plant and causes problems down there. If, if the village, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that accurate? Is that accurate? There's only one speedie that follow up, like, on there?
That is correct.
That's a combination of- So it's a single speedies outfall?
Let me, I'll try. Presently, yes, there's one speedies permit that the town holds. And the, and the village is a, is a significant other user permitted through the town. However, as you may have mentioned, part of this project is, is the village is going to obtain its own speedies permit from the D E C. It's going to be, except for the outfall, but like the ghosts that's still going to be shared between the town and the village, they're totally separate systems. So whatever gets dumped in, it was never dumped in, it was just Mr. Kansas. But whatever, whatever septicage gets treated, it'll have no effect on the town plant because it's totally separate. The town will be doing absolutely zero, um, treatment of any village, um, influence comes out of the uplink, so. That is, that will not, even if it ever was an issue, it can't be an issue in the future because of the two separate speedies permits.
Okay. If, if the village builds this building, bringing septic haulers, it can no longer, because of the village sewer plant, it's the industrial part for your sewage trucks and your sewage waste. I don't know how far Chamberlain and everybody else goes to bring their sewage to the village, but they're gonna go, they're gonna be bringing them in from a long ways. He says that the lawsuit limits them to seven. The, the management of the plant, in my opinion, has very little regards to the things. Self-interest, a lot of neglect, the buildings are old, look at the fence that goes around it, it's an eyesore. If you, if you want to talk about grandfathering in a clause, Xerox has a three and a half acre hazardous waste dump. Now, it's part of the, the federal register for hazardous waste dumps. Now, does that mean we let Xerox go back in and take in hazardous chemicals? My five acres across the street used to be a turkey farm, Dash's Donuts and Ice Cream. Does that mean I can go back to retail, or maybe a pig farm? I, I, I don't even cut the grass too early because I don't want to bother neighbors. And that's, that's not the way some of my neighbors act. The zoning laws, I don't know if he needs a zoning variance for this, sounds like something else. But anyways, zoning boards are here to protect people from property owners who don't care. The village has tried and done, got away with a lot of stuff over there on Route two fifty. D E C rarely goes over there. There's other ways to handle this. The septic or the sewage, or a concentrated sewage haulers, like they've been doing for the last two or three years. This, this permission to let these people build this building and renovate their property is just gonna make things worse over there.
So are you against all upgrades to this facility?
I've been for upgrading for, since eighty-two. I would love to see them fix the place up, but they don't.
They're doing it not. Part of this is they're upgrading the facility, so are you against that?
No, not at all. I think if they got their own speedies permit, then they're gonna have to play fair. They're gonna have to play like the rest of the sewage treatment plants in the country. You know, when, when Van Laer lets the, the sewage sludge that's treated come out of their plant, they have to treat it like a hazardous waste. The village puts it in a dump truck, sometimes it's raining on it, sometimes the truck breaks down and they drive it into their evaporation buildings. That's the greenhouse with all the broken windows, or the other woodshed over there with the doors that go closed. I mean, the, the people over on the other side of the plant will tell you, that, that building's full of sludge. According to the lawsuit, they were supposed to put that in a sealed container and take it to the landfill. And that doesn't happen all the time. We've got documentation from D E C after we call them and bug them, come over here, check this out, it stinks. They come down and they say, and they catch the truck in the, in the drying beds, and they said, well, it broke down. As far as other things that happened at this plant, it wasn't three or four months after the settlement, all of a sudden they got ten wheelers over there on this huge asphalt pad that used to be for the, the, uh, composting. They got a pile the size of my garage of crushed and pulverated stone. They got a tractor trailer truck tanker with hot tire, and they're doing staging for fixing the roads up in the village. We called D E C, they said they can't do that, that's a sewage treatment plant, they can't do what? And within two days, D E C came down there and put an end to it. But this is the kind of behavior, this is the kind of history that we have to put up with from who's ever running the plant over there, who's ever calling the shots. My wife tries to call the village, and they don't return calls. I, I just told you, we were there with fifty people in petition to try to get them to stop dumping, not a pit, it's a pipe, he says, it's just a pipe. You could, you could stand in my yard, when the trucks unloaded, it smelled so bad, ten, twenty minutes go by, they're all done, the wind blows it down the street, and it's okay until the next truck banks in there.
Okay, sir, um, so are you the spokesperson for everybody or the more? Okay. We, we've got, we've got a lot of people. Can I just summarize what I think I heard you say? Lots of issues leading up to twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. Apparently, those issues have been resolved, there's no trucks that are coming in there and dumping, open dumping is not occurring anymore. You're in favor of the upgrades to the, that are being proposed because this facility needs upgrades, correct?
Yes.
And, um, you're in favor of that they're gonna get their own individual speedies permit?
Yes.
Uh, can we, once again, we, we've got to get this movement, please, if we can get the max person on, thank you.
Brian Donovan, I live at six twenty-three Webster Road. I live directly north of the water treatment plant, on the same side of the street.
Could you just state when you moved in, sir?
Uh, nineteen ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
I've been there twenty-nine years. So, just for a little history, I, um, I've lived there twenty-nine years, I haven't, besides the first year that we moved in, I never had an issue with the treatment plant, just besides the first year. After that, for like the last, I mean, for the, for the next, um, fifteen, twenty years, at the thing, we never had an issue with the smell, I mean, it would smell maybe twice, you know, we just smelled like twice a year, um, at the time, right? But then they, then all of a sudden they stopped the way they were doing the treatment, you know, bringing in the septic haulers and bringing in, um, the, the leaf law. So everything changed then, and, um, and so the last four years since the lawsuit, they stopped doing that stuff, right? Bringing in the traffic with the septic haulers, and everything's been good again. So, my issue, I don't mind an upgrade to the facility. I do not want the septic haulers to come back, I don't care if it's in a building or not. Because one thing, I don't think there's any guarantee that the building is gonna stop smelling, you know? The other thing is, I built a new barn on my property, I don't know, ten years back maybe, and one of the stipulations I had from the zoning board was I could not use my building as a business, right? The sewer treatment plant is a service for the village sewer, sewer. And if they're allowed to bring in the trucks, they're using that as a business. And I'm not allowed to do that. And it's unnecessary because them trucks can go someplace else, they don't have to go to the village. I mean, to, to the village plant. So, I, I really object, object to that. Also, on these plans, I don't see anything about how tall these buildings are going to be, the drinking stations or the proposed building, how, the height of them, they don't have that on the plan. And I think that would make a difference. But, I don't, I don't, I don't want to see these trucks come back, and I don't want to see that building.
But you're in favor of the, the upgrades there, Frank?
Yeah, I think, I think they can use upgrades, yes.
So going to leave the trucks?
Yeah.
Your objection with respect to the trucks specifically, is it, is it noise, is it odor, is it all the above?
It's all the above. And it's a lot of, so I'm, I'm directly next to the plant, and if I could show you a picture, I can show you what it looks like off my back window when these trucks come by, when these trucks come by.
What is, what has changed since you put a lot of trucks?
What has changed?
Yeah.
It's, the trucks are like a moose, you know? The noise when they go by, um, well, the smell, the smell, it's just a, it's a, it's a poor quality to the neighborhood. You know, having these, these trucks here.
And did you agree with the applicant, he indicated approximately seven trucks a day, does that sound right to you?
So, so I don't know, I mean, they, I don't know if that's, if they took the volume of the trucks they had in a year and just divided it by, you know, three hundred and sixty, and they came up with seven? But it's not, I mean, I don't know how they're really gonna do it, are they only really gonna take seven trucks?
I'm saying, historically, what, what's your observation of that?
Oh, there was, there was trucks constantly, and I can show you some pictures where the.
No, no, just, just, just tell us, so the, the record's clear. You talk about twenty, thirty trucks a day, what do you, what do you?
So, you know, I work also, right?
Sure.
So, um, but just time, so I work from six to two thirty. So I get home at two thirty, I mean, there's, there's multiple trucks that come by.
More than seven?
Yes, I, I can, like I said, I got pictures up here showing three of them lined up. I, I got pictures of big tankers, so.
That's Monday through Friday, during business hours?
Yeah.
You also mentioned, you said the trucks could go someplace else.
Yeah, like to, like to the town, or Van Leeuwen, in the roundabout. I mean, it's just unnecessary, it's, I guess in this, you know, eighty-eight years ago, this wasn't, you know, our, our, our area wasn't a populated area. It is now, things have changed, you know, there's, it's a neighborhood. And the town plant is not a neighborhood, you know, the town plant is still rural, you know? So, it's just, it doesn't make sense to have that kind of business.
So you're okay with the upgrade, but you'd like to not have it allowed to be a, a private?
The septic hauler in the building, and then the, the change, well, yeah. The, the addition of more buildings on the property bothers me also, right? So the, the, the truck, the septic hauler building wasn't there. They turned down the one big thing and brought in two other ones, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
So I have no problem with it being a sewer treatment plant. But just the other stuff, and trying to use it as a business, it's not right in our neighborhood.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jared Garrett, I live at six sixteen Webster Road, I live directly across the street, just up from.
Sorry, can I follow you again?
Jared Garrett.
What's your address?
Pardon me?
Address?
Six one six Webster Road, I live directly across from the entrance, directly across from the entrance. So a couple of questions I have, and we'll go back to the engineer.
Sorry to interrupt you, yeah, when did you move out?
Uh, about eight years ago.
Eight years, roughly.
So I have a couple of questions for the engineer, I guess it would be you. So the scrubber system that you mentioned that you had on the system for the trucks that would be coming in?
Mr. Garrett, what would you like to do to keep it somewhat under control? Would you state what your questions are, let the applicants come up afterwards and answer those questions?
My question is, is that designed just for smells? Or is it a C O? Because my question is this, if the, the system is designed for the truck drives in and the doors are closed, well, that truck has to remain running the entire time it's pumping, it can't offload by gravity. Centrifugal pump, so it has to be running, so you're gonna have a carbon monoxide issue in that building. So my question is, how are you gonna guarantee that the doors remain closed? Because I want to know what air intake systems are bringing in, what's the air exchange rate on the building? What system you have? Is it a mechanical scrubber to just, for, is it a carbon filter? Is it just going to be for odor? Or how are you gonna get rid of the carbon, the C O issues? One, to protect it, the driver that's in there, and two, the plant operators. Because if you can't do that, the doors are gonna come open, and your problem comes back. Yeah, yeah, no answer.
Okay.
Secondly, I have worked closely with the police department on two fifty because of the speed there. I don't think anybody that's ever driven that road would disagree that there's a problem with speed. I've had that problem for about eight years. Environment myself, so every time there's a wreck at that intersection, I start there first. I've worked a number of wrecks, from the elderly to pulling children out of cars there. And where that's intersection continues to get worse. Police work generally in, with eight trucks, it's going to get worse.
Are, are you talking clock or are you talking?
Two fifty and Clem, that intersection, right? So with additional trucks, I know it's gonna get worse, and I don't think we've satisfied the question about, you said seven trucks. Is that seven that's going to be allowed to come once a day? Or is that seven that can run as many times as they can to satisfy the twenty thousand gallons? Because that's different. The lawsuit said seven, I wasn't part of that, I'm excusing myself from that, but what was said was seven. Who's gonna maintain, quantify, that only seven trucks show up?
See, I, I think there's some confusion here, at least in my opinion, with respect to this lawsuit. Then the, the, there's no municipal, the village was a municipal party with private citizens, right? And if, if the municipality, the village, acts contrary to the settlement, then the citizens who are part of the lawsuit would have to have some type of enforcement action to enforce whatever it was you all agreed to.
I wasn't part of that, so.
No, I'm just saying.
Right or wrong, I was a part of it.
Generally speaking, but I don't believe it is incumbent on this board, although it may be a relevant question, traffic certainly is part of the criteria we should look at.
It has to be part of the criteria.
But what, in, in terms of setting a minimum or maximum number within a certain period in order to comply with a private settlement is not our requirement.
Unshut.
Okay.
Somebody's gotta do some traffic survey to be able to manage to say, this is the number of trucks that's gonna be allowed to come there. Quite frankly, I don't know why they're even allowed to come there. It doesn't support the village, right, unless it's gonna be some revenue generator, at which point it doesn't benefit any of us, it doesn't benefit on that road. My son's bus has been passed twice with the red lights going. Both times he was exiting the bus and the bus driver had to grab him and stop him. That's the traffic problem that's on that road right now. There's videos of it, I'm working with the city police, there's already a problem on that road. Up until last year, there wasn't a child.
Do you have traffic associated with the treatment plant?
No, the drug overdose was associated there because they used that facility. Somebody pulled in and parked and overdosed, right? Because the gates weren't open. Pull over, parked, overdose, I'm standing in my yard, Brian, I think you had to come over.
Yeah, I gave the I C P R.
You had two of us to respond. Okay. So, but to get back to the traffic piece of it.
Let's get back to this piece of it.
The traffic piece of it, I want assurance that the number of trucks aren't gonna continue to grow up and go up. And how are we gonna maintain that? Who's watching that? Because there's already varying times for busting down through their car, and tonight, man.
We've heard they're gonna answer that question, we'll come back to that at the end.
And the last question is, why are we, I'm okay, just for clarity, I am a hundred percent okay with upgrading that facility. Because my background's occupational health and safety from environmental standpoint. I'm okay with the upgrade, I'm just not understanding why all of a sudden we're gonna add a second bolt-on piece to this thing to take something that has no benefit other than a financial reward? Unless somebody has some other explanation of, why is it coming? What's the reason we're doing the second half? I haven't heard of that piece here tonight. What's the second piece of this? Is there a financial reward to the village, the residents, what piece is it? There's gotta be some tangible cost piece in that.
Yep, and I was gonna ask that myself, so. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello, I'm Richard Fraser, I live right at the intersection of Webster and Wall. So I can walk down and see the vehicles coming down Wall Road. Okay, there's been no.
What's your address?
What's that?
Address?
Five ninety to Webster Road. My driveway is right across from Wall Road, so I give out the traffic. And no one said anything about this chain link fence that's there. If they thought to themselves it's gonna devalue my home. There's been nothing about a wall, nothing about more trees planted. I can't sit on my porch and look and enjoy it because I can look directly at this and see this. How come there's been nothing about what they're gonna do for people with, with properties like myself so we don't get the value with all, with everything there, plus the traffic? And why don't they come in from Wall Road? I can walk down Wall Road, it's terrible when I walk down there to look and see by the creek over there. There's been nothing said about that at all on this, protecting the values of the homes and people that live there.
What about the upgrades to the actual facility itself, how do you feel about those?
Am I, am I for the upgrades? No.
Not enough?
No, no.
You prefer that it operates as it is?
I prefer it operates as it is, and I prefer that, if they're gonna keep it, do something with that fence and the trees. It's terrible to look at it from my home and the other homes. It devalues our home, why can't they put up walls? Why can't they put up something there so it can't be seen from nowhere?
Have you expressed these concerns to the village?
What's that?
Have you expressed these concerns to the village?
I don't know.
Have you expressed these concerns to the village?
Should I want to sell my home in, in a year? You can look right across there and see it, it doesn't look good.
So the only upgrades you're in favor of is the fence?
Right.
So they're not here for that?
Sorry.
Okay, next, please.
Hi, I'm Robert Freeze, eleven seventy-six Wall Road. And I moved in there in twenty thirteen.
Yes?
So, just briefly, I don't agree with the wisdom of increasing that operation beyond what the village needs. So I'm not in favor of the septic receiving building. All in favor of the upgrades? That's good. I do have a question for Labella or whoever. I don't know what those buildings are that are down the hill from the plant along Mill Creek. There's a lot of busted windows, broken roof, roofs there, I don't know if they're part of the sewage facility? And if they are, are they going to be repaired also?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please. So I think we've got a lot of comments around general terms that you may want to address. There's probably gonna be a handful of people more, you may want to collect all this, collect your thoughts, and get together some kind of document to consider as a board, whether or not it makes sense to perform with this tonight, or how do you address these general comments? Probably could be more likely tomorrow.
My name is Patrick McDonald, I actually live at four sixty-seven Fort Rowan Webster, which is right on the corner from here. I met my wife, I was a junior in high school, so I spent many years in and out of this home over the years, practically grew up there. And we were pretty involved in this whole lawsuit. And one thing, and obviously everybody's depending about the way that it looks. But when we were getting involved in this lawsuit, what nobody's mentioning is the fact that this place has basically become a landfill. I mean, there's storage grills, the buildings are falling apart. However, when this was four years ago, and we were going through numbers that were provided to us by the village and by the village board, this place was over five million dollars in disrepair on their current facility four years ago. And that's one of the reasons why we're having the owners, having to deal with lawsuits and lawyers in court to make things get done. And the last time any of us were talking publicly, either at the village we're being told by them, we don't have to listen to you, you don't elect us, you don't pay taxes in the village. We come to the town, the town told us on numerous occasions, there's nothing we can do for you, hire a lawyer. We did that. We have this upheld, and for the last four years, it's actually been a decent place to live. And now because somebody's pockets are going dry, we're actually sitting here, listening to the possibility that somebody's gonna give them their golden ticket to fleece another municipality. I mean, track record just shows between the fire departments, the water authorities, and now this plant, they milk them until they go dry, and when they can't, they try to find something else to milk. And now this plant is not a money generator anymore because they can't bring the contaminated materials in from Xerox that they were poisoning the groundwater, which is why they were shut down. The only reason they were able to get away with that was because they were piggybacking off of the speedies permit through the town. Because of intermunicipal agreements, they were allowed to continue doing it, for whatever reason. And I know since all the upgrades at, at the town sewer treatment plant, originally they were trying to get the village to tie in, the village refused to become a part of that program. I also can say, because we were told by direct employees and people that are supervisors in the town and, and people that are higher up, that the town and the taxpayers of the town have had to incur fines from the D E C and the bodies that govern these plants because the overflow from their plant goes down the line, kills all the bacteria, they happen to come for an inspection, next thing you know, the town taxpayers are paying a seventy-five thousand dollar fine for one occurrence. So, as far as I know, they never told us that we were reimbursed from the village for that. So I mean, before they even get the opportunity to have this facility, they've already cost the towns and taxpayers money, not to mention the potential for all the inconvenience that we fought for a year to make go away. Uh, it was a lot of aggravation, it was a lot of time spent. It was a lot of aggravation, it was a lot of time spent going to meetings, dealing with lawyers, going to court, and it only went away without going to trial for one very good reason. They didn't want to see their employees face charges. I mean, it wasn't because they were being nice people, that's what it was coming down to. And call a spade a spade, you know? We don't want to see it again. And now that we actually are on our own turf, we hope that the board sees fit to do the right thing by their constituents now, because now we actually have the power to look at them and say, you pay zero taxes in the town of Webster because you're a municipality. You know, you have your plant, and you don't elect us. It'd be nice to see it go the other way.
So, can you just summarize your key points? Are you in favor of the upgrades to the facility with the exception of the septic receiving?
Well, I think that's another thing that hasn't really been clarified. I mean, everybody in this room would love to see upgrades for the five-plus million that they're in disrepair. I don't think anybody really wants to see upgrades that goes towards these changes.
Can I stop you there? We don't know if that's five, I can't verify or validate anything you're saying.
If it was not.
All I want to know is, are you in favor of the proposed updates to the digester clarifier and the two new tripling filters?
I would be in favor of anything that prevents future problems for the current setup. Does not to facilitate a future business endeavor.
Got you. Got you. Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Polly Khan, 16 Webster Road. I live across the street from the sewer treatment plant. We moved here in 1982, and our home was built in 1850.
Could I just, was it your husband that asked?
Have you?
I just, okay.
My husband has built my house, yes. Lots of additions, but we've made it. But we moved to Webster because in 1982, there was horse farms on the corner of Plum Road and Route 230. We had four beautiful girls, they all live in Webster now with 13 grandchildren. And I have to say that I really love Webster. We have a great police department, everything is going great. And in 2018, when we had the lawsuit, it was settled, and it's been very happy with our septic haulers. I have a picture where you can see right out of my front window where the septic haulers pulls right out of the plant, and you can hear the "rrrr" when they're pulling in, you can hear them downshifting and going into the plant. It's been very peaceful with them, Don. We have had a few complaints. I have called the village. I have left a message for Mr. Byrds to please call me. He hasn't returned my call. I called Ron Nesbit when I was having problems, and he said, I can't do anything for you. And the lawsuit is all over, and I don't think the village wants to talk to you. And I said, okay. So we dealt with DEC.
Could you help me understand this, I guess it was the 2018 settlement, we'll call it?
Right.
The plaintiff? Can you hear me?
What did you say?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh. Could you help me understand, in 2018, as part of this settlement, I believe I heard earlier that the plaintiffs in that agreed to a future septic receiving station? Is that an accurate statement?
Well, of course, at the lawsuit, we talked about the lawsuit, they said they were going to put on Donovan Street, and everybody cheered. We thought, wow, there's hope for it to be on Donovan Street.
So does the settlement actually specifically state Donovan Street?
No. So, okay, I'll finish telling you the remainder of this story. In August of 2021, I called DEC on a Sunday morning, there was disgusting smell outside, and Tom Snowing from DEC Police came down. And he said that he went over and he found John at the plant. And he found sludge in the greenhouse, and that's where the smell, the disgusting smell was coming from. John was working on a Sunday over there.
What year?
This was August of 2021. It was August the 8th on a Sunday. And John was at the plant working on a Sunday, and those are not his hours to be working. And it was also documented by Tara Blom on 8/12. She called me and said DEC had filed a report in their office that the DEC police was over there. Then on October the 1st of 2018, I made a complaint, a formal complaint to DEC. I called them to tell them that they were doing staging across the street, they had large trucks, 18-wheelers, the flames were three feet high. And I explained to her that we live in this beautiful residential neighborhood with 4,000 homes that surround it. The dust was unbelievable, the way they were doing their staging.
Can I ask, is this prior to the settlement or after?
After.
This instance was after the settlement?
Yes, after the settlement, yes.
No, no, it wasn't septic trucks. It was staging.
This was October the 1st of 2018.
So is this what?
After the lawsuit.
Oh, the highway law. That's what I was going to say. Is this what your husband referenced earlier with the storm?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Those are two complaints, and I did call the village for Mr. Byrds, especially with the staging, and I never returned, he never returned.
So just so I'm clear, there's only been two instances since 2018 that you've waged complaints. One was a one-off thing because they were doing some work, some roadwork, and they were staging equipment. And then the other one was truly related to the operation of the plant?
Yes. There has been smell on Wall Road. We smell things once in a while, but not, you know, not too much. But on Wall Road, it has been smelling, and I've talked to the neighbors over there, and the smell seems like it's coming from maybe the sludge building on Wall Road. It's a terrible smell by the creek. And there's a few neighbors that are here tonight can tell you about the smells. But bottom line, I cannot, it's a waste of my time to call the village because they don't want to talk to me, and nothing I can do. They can do whatever they want over there. It's like an industrial plant. They've been bringing the village snow in in the wintertime. It's not here yet, but they have a concrete pad in front of my house, it's like a hundred feet from my front room window. And at nighttime, they bring the snow in, they bring it in the morning, they bring it right out of the village, bang those gates, and sometimes if I'm in the office in the front of the house, you can hear windows. So why is the village bringing all this snow down, piled this high, and it takes all spring for it to melt? It's a very nuisance noise. And this is where I live. And to complain to the village, I can't, sorry.
Anything else related to the operation of the treatment plant specifically, and what they're proposing in the upgrades? Are you for or against the upgrades to the clarifier, the tripling filter? Are you a favor of those upgrades?
Yes. But of course, I'm not in favor of these septic haulers. They're just making money for the village because they want money.
Got it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. Once again, it seems there's a pretty consistent theme here, right? Everybody's in favor of upgrades to the plant, I think they would like beautification. I know, I'm going to get.
I'm against it.
I think, okay, I think they want beautification of the remaining property, right, and some of the other aspects of it.
Hi, thanks for being here. I mean, we got weeks before Christmas and cold, and everyone wants to go with their family, so I just want to say thank you.
Well, we get paid a ton of money, that's why. Check the sound records.
I just want to say thank you, and I will make this brief. I had this, look at this, nice little summary of my life, and I have spent over 30 years on Webster Road, 610, and now I have an interest because my children spend more time there than me. They are babysat by my wonderful parents. And it did get better. The lawsuit helped, you know, it got the village to listen, and they told the residents what we want to hear. Yes, we're going to move it, and, you know, we're not going to have all these septic haulers, and we're going to get rid of this leach aid that we didn't realize was such a problem. But we got evidence that they were doing things wrong, and now they say we're doing it right, we're going to do it right this time. How do you earn our trust back? You're already doing it wrong, and, you know, Don, I love what you said, it was just an odor. I mean, we had a lawsuit for an odor. Well, an odor that you just said, oh, yeah, it stinks because they're just dumping it in a hole, but this garage door will help. So right there, you just admitted that the odor is so bad that we have to frame in these trucks so that it helps the residents. You know, my kids, I loved that they have five acres, like parents' house, right across the street from the village treatment plant. And they don't want to go to summer camps. They want to go play in Anna Papa's house and, you know, on the zip line. But if you bring back these septic haulers, you know, what, seven, eight, they want? They're filled. Let's just be honest, we're not going to have one household and a truck to ride across the cities to get there. And when you ask Don, how many people in the village are on septic? We couldn't quantify that. Maybe one house. So again, you know, Mr. Don was right, this has become an industrial park, and it's no longer meant to help the village to get rid of their waste, their human sewage, their escrement or what have you. The town knows what they're doing. I mean, I would love for you guys to meet with the village and show them how you're doing it, because I have friends break down on Phillips Road, and I said, do you smell the sewage? Because we used to smell it all the time on Webster Road. No, they just have that, and we know it's there. So again, I just want to say thank you for being here. I think that this whole, 30, we're going to do upgrades, right? We don't know how to answer it. Half of us are saying, no upgrades. We know what that means. They want to spend millions of dollars on a new building to, for what? Because they're, oh, the do-gooders. We're not here to make a profit, right? That's what you said, Don. This is not to make a profit. We want to help other towns and other cities who come here, and we'll fix it for them. No, 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 I don't buy it. They're there to make a profit, it's always about job security. I'm not buying this, look over here, upgrades, guys, get on board. Because once we all say, yes, we do want those upgrades, they're going to throw something else in, just like the lawsuit. Look, we're going to go to Donovan Street, we're going to get away from all of these neighborhoods, and you're not going to see kids out here. My husband's putting my kids to that tonight, just like all of these kids, grandkids, you don't see the effects. We town members, we pay the price, right? They get the benefit, they get the profit. I don't want the profit, don't even give me part of profit. We didn't want the lawsuit, we had to do the lawsuit to get their attention. So that's what's just so heartbreaking about it, is they're not smelling the poop, and I don't blame them. Building however many years ago, they put up farm fields, and I know it's not about just the smell, it's about the traffic, and it's about the quality of life. They're ruining our quality of life for our children. We're leaving this world to our kids. I want my kids to grow up within the town of Webster and love it as much as I do. And they're ruining it for them. They're going to grow up with memories of smelling sewage and wafting and noises, and it's no longer doing what it was meant to do.
So are you, once again, I keep asking the same question, if we could all just answer the same question, this would be a lot quicker.
Am I for it?
Are you for parts of the upgrades, none of the upgrades?
Show of hands, is there people who don't know how to answer the question?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I mean, they're giving, they're telling you what you want to hear, they're really agreeing.
You're not answering my question.
Yeah, the basic part of the question, the same thing is, are you for the upgrades but against the trucks coming in and dumping?
Of course. What would it be?
This is not going to go away.
I know.
If this board denies this.
They trust you, though, right?
Let me help you understand, if this board denies this use, the extension of pre-existing use, this will continue to operate as it is. I don't know what they're going to do for the town. I have no idea what they will do, right? They'll probably continue to operate it until the last day that they can, right? Until the equipment becomes, they're up, right? So my question is, to your point, you want a better Webster, right? What are you in favor of or not in favor of with respect to this plant? Because this will, if we do not act on that, or if we deny this, this is going to continue to operate as is, as is, right? So then I need you to come up here and state this. So it's nine o'clock this evening, I want to get through this, I want to hear everybody's points, but it's pretty simple. I need to, we need to know a few things. Could you state your point?
Kansas, can you get everyone?
Are you?
Just want to clarify, my name is Kansas McDonald, I'm a student of school, I live on Wall Road. We're okay with upgrades, but it has not encompassed the underlying problems of dilapidated buildings and mismanagement.
So not these upgrades, different upgrades?
This upgrade, we should not be talking about these upgrades. It's like building an addition on a hoarder house. First you have to clean up your house, then we'll entertain your addition. Or tell us how the addition incorporates cleaning up your house. I think that's what most of the people are kind of stuck on. The upgrades do not fix the fence, the dilapidated buildings, the highway department usage, the snow bringing in, it doesn't encompass these problems.
That's true.
So this little bit of, guys, we're going to do an upgrade, does not fix the better picture.
So show of hands of who agrees with what Kansas is saying.
Does anybody agree with what I'm saying, that it doesn't fix the property? You're talking about something very, very specific. So I am against these upgrades.
So you're more concerned about the property and the looks and appeal of the property itself as opposed to upgrades to the mechanical systems associated with it?
And not increasing the current services.
We understand, no one's in favor of the settlement, right? I understand.
These upgrades have not been proven to be needed in order to keep the facility operational. Nothing was discussed. We heard a lot of words like likely, we have heard words like reasonable. The village does not understand those words, okay? So unless you.
So you want proof of end of useful life, that this equipment, to your.
But it has to be.
Answer some of these things, they want to hear more, some proof of this equipment today as it exists, clarifiers, the tripling filters are at end of useful life, and if they're not repaired, X, Y, and Z might happen. I think we need to get that called again. Not, once again, we'll talk about it.
The overall appearance in management, management of property, nobody there on a Sunday morning or on a Saturday night, or flames three feet high coming off the fire stand. This is management, and these are problems. Right now, the village is not accountable for these items. The town says we can't stop it, and the village doesn't answer phone calls. We called DEC, but they don't have the speedies permit. The only one that they can go and find are the town of Webster. They can't go down and stop the village. The village is unaccountable for the way they look at this.
So, once again, you're in favor of the mechanical system upgrades, provided that there's some proof that the existing equipment is at end of useful life and it's needed for these reasons. And you want to hear more about upgrades in management of the facility to have a greater look and feel for the town offices?
And the property in general, yes. Absolutely right.
Okay, thanks.
Folds in the roofs.
Got you. Next, please. Once again, I want to make it very clear, we are not going to come to a resolution this evening, we're going to work with the applicant, have them put together a prepared response to address the multitude of comments and questions that are coming.
Sure. And I respect that my job here is to add anything in addition, not repetitive of what we've already heard. So my name is Katie Gorges, I live at 257 Circle Lane in Webster. I own a business that operates out of 805 Bridge Road, also in Webster. And my parents at Sinton Webster Road are my primary babysitter for my three children over the last 15 to 20 years.
Wait, is that your sister?
Yeah.
And now he says all of her children.
No, yeah. Okay. So additional comments and questions that I'd like to add to this for Mr. Higgins that haven't been addressed. One, the economic impact and plan for the village. I know that they're saying it's not a moneymaker, but what's being spent and what is coming in, and is there. And what is coming in and is there a return on investment? I think the secondary part of that is a return on investment for the community. Maybe we will make money or break even, but is it at a loss for other things? I.e. disruption to the people who live in the area and their concerns we spent tonight. The other thing, a demand for these services. So there was a discussion from Mr. White about this great facility on Phillips Road. Are they not able to take those additional seven haulers that the village would like to take? Is there a demand for this service for people who live in the vicinity of Webster or the village? And then the last one is comparables. So we talked about 1934. Where do these types of facilities exist today? And how does it compare to the landscape and geography of this current one across Webster Road? So what's the kind of density of the population? And then, Mr. Higgins, you were kind enough to speak to the economic impact on the houses in that area. With due respect, I do not believe that is your expertise. So I request to have further knowledge and information from somebody with that expertise. If we go back to adding more services, how does that change the value of the homes, right? Many of these residents spoke that they've lived there for twenty, thirty, forty years. As the increase in neighborhoods in that area and the decrease of those services at the village treatment plant, I'm guessing it will improve their house value over time. But if we start ramping up services, suddenly it's going to start decreasing value. Now, I'm no expert, nor is Mr. Higgins, so I'd like to see somebody who could speak to that. If additional services are added, instead of decreasing, how does that change the home value in that area? So those are all new things.
Thank you.
You got it. I took really good notes and I like being close to the end. The thing that I would also like to add, and I know that this was pointed out, but it bears repetition. We came here tonight.
Wait a minute, you told us you were here to talk about your fix.
That's all right. We came here tonight because this is our forum. So you had spoken in the beginning about how many calls did you receive and how many conversations? We're here tonight for that reason. And just, just for your own, Mr. Noon, information, just to show of hands, how many people are here tonight who were not a part of the last settlement? So there, we spoke before, Mr. White spoke in length about the settlement. Most of the people here tonight had nothing to do with that, just for your own knowledge. Thank you.
Next, please.
Jimenez, 1222 Prairie Drive. Alright, so what inspections have been formed regarding drainage?
Sorry, sir, you, you.
Hearing speed.
Oh, I'm over here. You, you sent in a, a letter?
Oh, right, perfect, you had it.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you weren't gonna be here tonight, so that was weird. Gotcha, okay, I was confused when you said it and I was looking down.
It's been reviewed.
Yep. Yeah, we got it. Yeah, sorry, when you said it, I'm like, I thought this person wasn't gonna be here tonight, so. Excellent, thank you.
He sent in a letter, but he didn't.
Steve Pepperstone, 1233 Wall Road. Been there since 1984. We've gone through various stages with the smell. More than shot, better, gotten worse. I'm all in favor of the upgrades that are needed to improve the smell and improve the plant, but not in favor of adding, you know, haulers to use.
Perfect, thank you.
Is there a breakdown? Maybe that's another question for Mr. Higgins.
If you're gonna have, if you're gonna speak, you gotta go up there and please state your name again.
Katie Orchard. Mr. Higgins, if you could add to your list a breakdown of the changes that are in respect to the odors and the existing work that is done there versus the changes that are for new services that wanna be added? I think that was another kind of point of confusion.
I think it's pretty clear, it's just the septic, septic receiving building has new services. Everything else existing in plain operation.
For the purpose of reducing odor is the question. Is, are the changes?
Gotcha, to the existing system.
Right, the changes to the existing.
Which would be the clarifier and the, um, it's only clarifier and the digester.
Thank you, back to those words of likely versus kind of research and, and, and true information.
Trickling filter has no odor and it's gonna be the digester and clarifier.
One other question for him?
Wait, now I don't think we ever approve multiple trips, but I'm to the. God, we don't have a little fun, I gotta. My kids are home trying to go to bed.
Could you spec, could you specify what improvements you are putting in to allow you to apply for a speedies permit? Tell us what it is. And the other thing is, it would be nice, but, you know, there's two buildings in the back, the old drying bed and the steel building, that are in a floodway right now. And it would, I don't know if they, they should be. They use the drying beds to put sludge in when, I guess when they can't haul the slugs out. So, and that's right in the flood zone. And it probably shouldn't be used for that. Okay, it's totally in, on the, in the back west side of the creek.
Yeah.
So I was wondering if those are gonna be torn down and it would be nice if they put up a 12-foot privacy fence around the whole place.
Alright, any, uh, comments, please?
Mark Fredar, 1267 Wall Road.
Sorry, 12, what?
1267. My concern is that these upgrades do not address odors. We're told they'll be the same or better. Well, if they're the same, it, it's, it's terrible. I mean, it, this plant is a public nuisance. So they're proposing things that will not, that do not address that problem.
Yeah, I think that was the last comment that she came up and made, that she wants specifics on what of the, which of these upgrades to the existing, existing system will have possibly impact on odor.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have that question. I, I, again, my question, my concern is that if the odors are gonna be the same or better, that's not, that's, that doesn't address the, that's, that's, does not solve the odor problems.
But my understanding is they're, they're having, only one incident that was documented since.
Well, every time there's.
Twelve, right?
That's only one person.
Every time I go by the tree, it smells terrible. You know, you're adjacent to that property. So, the plant is a public nuisance. And you don't have free enjoyment of your property.
Okay.
We live with it, cause it's not as bad as used. We'll live with it, cause it could be worse, right?
Jimenez, 1222 Prairie Drive. In regards to the, to the sludge and the smell of the creek, no creek being right behind those two sludge buildings. I mean, you're, you're talking 10, 12-foot is the distance between the greenhouse and the creek itself. I was there years ago and I asked questions about, when's the last time anybody was inspecting drains in this building? And that was the answer, okay? I asked multiple questions about inspections and stuff like that. We've got things of concern about like odor runoff and stuff like that. There's no bladder underneath any of these buildings. They, they don't treat their own water runoff. You guys are creek related.
Correct?
It's not correct? You capture all the runoff in your facility. How does it make you into a creek then? You guys always say that, you know, it does stink. It does have problems with the pollution out of the creek, so.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, one or two more, please, anybody else? Last call. I think I would go on to questions that were being pushed back. I'm gonna close out the public comment portion of the meeting for the evening and I think if you'd like one comment.
So what we're, we're going to do is allow the applicant to respond in writing. Matt, I'm assuming you've got a good note ticker.
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna ask, I tried to jot down as many questions I could, but is there gonna be some sort of a list?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what we'll do, I, I don't wanna throw, yeah, for any, Josh, I'll be possible. Perhaps you could send an email, ask your substance summary, get that over to Matt and Mr. White. And I think that together with your notes, you should be able to put together a response.
Is this being recorded, did you?
Yeah, it is.
You can probably use that then too.
Yeah, no, it's a little cover some, but it is.
We'll, we'll try to best, in between what he has and some of the.
We have minutes for everything. So, um, sure, yeah, a couple of things. Mr. White, I still don't understand a couple of things here. So, I just, in terms of, I guess, running parallel paths with Matt's three times, a few questions I can ask, maybe you can get your thoughts as well. One is, so when you read the language in 35091, extension of non-conform use. And it talks about the ZBA being able to prescribe reasonable restrictions depending upon the nature and history of the use of the treatment. I'm, I'm curious as to, if you've got a plant that is operating, generally speaking, within the confines of the law, but there's these collateral impacts of noise, of odor, of traffic and sound, whether or not that requires this board to essentially be locked into the fact that that's the history. And unless these new modifications, modifications of the plant are going to increase that baseline, which according to the course of the citizen, is already problematic. But if it's the applicant's position that albeit already problematic, if they're not more problematic, then that is not something that, that the board could deny. That's one question. You wouldn't be on that, you don't need to answer that now, you understand my, my question?
I understand your question, I think, I think the town's own statute answers it. It's, it's the deleterious effects of such extension. Not, so you have a baseline, so you gotta focus on.
I, I understand, that's why I, that's why I asked the question. So you think it's just self-evident?
I think it is self-evident. I do not believe that this board has the authority to, in effect, regulate the current operation of the village's wastewater treatment plant, which is.
Which is what we stated.
Right, so, that, that, that's why I'm asking the question, because a lot of what folks here are saying, you know, over a cup of coffee or a cocktail is certainly relevant and important, but the way where we find ourselves right now legally with the history of the plant and the statute that we have to work with may not be compelling enough to the board because of the fact that it's existed, if you will, this poor existence. They, they set their own bar, in other words. So if you have any case law or interpretation on that, I'd, I'd, I'd be interested in thinking about it. That's one issue. The second issue is, there's, there's an abandonment here of these septic trucks. Because you, as the applicant, the village, agreed to discontinue that. It's been over a year since it's been given. And I recognize that it was part and parcel of a lawsuit, but it was a private lawsuit freely and voluntarily entered into by the village. And I, I asked that you respond as to whether there's been an abandonment here. If there's been an abandonment of these septic trucks, then this board would not be forced to approve those or could, I believe, curtail them if we approved the balance of the expansion. Now, the third issue would be, I've used it in understanding, I guess, some reverse engineering, if there was a deny by this board, how that would impact the settlement to the extent that now this, kind of this hundred thousand dollar bar is, becomes somewhat of a loophole issue? I guess the plant would be forced to continue to operate without the improvements, I suppose, I don't know how long that lasts or how, what utilization there is. But I think some understanding as to that outcome would be beneficial for the board and, and the residents that are, that are opposed to understand what the downside is of kind of pressing the envelope. It's just a practical matter, not necessarily a legal matter. So those three issues would, would certainly help me advise the board when we get to that, at more of a time. And anything else you'd like to, your learned experience, you'd like to, what, should we go with the board? And obviously, this board is aware, the residents are aware, that if we make a determination and we do not approve the application and it's not founded on facts in this record that apply to the elements of 350, 35091, then we would expose the town to an Article 78 if it was determined that our findings are arbitrary, gracious, which is the standard that we're up against. So, there's a, of those.
Excuse me, did I have a clarification on something? So, um, this was supposed to be a variance medium, right?
No, it, well, it, it's considered a use, it, it's considered the extension of a non-conform use.
The reason it's previously not performing was established prior to zoning regulations. This was established back in 1934, I believe, communicated, and then in 1945, 1946.
Don't want to say something's grandfathered in, it's like, like how the plant exists right now, it can exist as it is right now. So like, once you start moving a building or doing something else, it's not grandfathered anymore, it's, it's new business, right?
That's right.
Which is why you're concerned.
There, there is criteria that were limited in making that determination of, and that's kind of what I'm, what I'm driving with here.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be existing to the residents' interpretation poorly. So the question becomes, you know, that's the standard, if it's not making it more poor, that's a terrible expression, if it's not making it more poor, then they may be entitled to it.
It's not the industry standard, it's just there's.
Correct.
It's about a peremptivity.
Correct.
It's about a peremptivity.
It may be formal assumptions.
I think that an interesting issue is, I mean, because it's not defined in the Webster code. You know, what is an extension or increase of a non-conform use? Like when, when, when do you cross that threshold that it becomes an extension? Because I could argue that, forget about the septic receiving station for a moment, but that everything else, if the village were just to do that, would not even need the approval of this board. Because I would argue that that's not even, that's not an extension or an increase of the previous community.
Understood. So are we clear, are, are, next up, I, I think the question to you is, we're gonna table this matter to a future debate. This board now meets monthly in 2020 for me. That's gonna be January, from, uh, January 10th or February 14th, March 14th. Preference would be February?
I think those gives the parties enough time to exchange information. The finality is you got some things that are gonna slow, slow us down, so. If it's holidays, you've got some things that are kind of slow, slow to step, so I would suggest we... So the request from this board would be to table this continuation of this until February 14th, 2023. And if we could set a target date for January 31st for some of the response, response back to, back to Javi, and then he'll, he'll get it to us.
Will we get that also? Will we get the response also?
You'll hear it immediately.
At least the question.
You'll hear it immediately.
So we won't have time to...
Let us see, yeah, let, let, if there's not any provision, I don't know, so the applicant would have an objection, we post that somewhere.
I know the attorneys would like to see a copy of their reply as well.
So, so the answers to the question, we'll get that posted on the town website, so it'll be accessible to you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so target date for the response, January 30th. And the target meeting date will be February 14th. If you need to adjust that to, to March, just let us know a couple weeks in advance.
But, but first, Josh was going to supply us with a list of questions to respond to.
Yes.
And might we expect that?
I think we can get that before the holiday, right? So, yeah, we have to have it before the holiday.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll...
I would want to get it January 15th.
Okay, all right. All in favor, favor of tableing this meeting to February 14th, 2023?
Yes.
Okay, we will see you back here in February right after. That concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you for watching and really thank you for participating.
Can you get a little air in there?
I taught him everything he had.